Would. Being that it's 10 o'clock, we're going to call the morning workshop to order with Public Works Director, County Engineer Gordy Kelsey. What you got?
Morning. I'll let Jeff get the first item on our list. Yeah, we have an item for a supplement agreement with our H2 engineering. It's for our sewer, our general sewer plan and rate study to extend the dollars, which was always planned for. They've actually got the draft copy of it, and that the extra $24,000 is to work with DOE to run the plan through DOE. And so the permit can be updated to include if if everybody's in agreeance to a new area, updated area.
We're expanding the boundaries.
When? When does this have to be done?
Uh, it doesn't have to be done anytime real soon, but.
Well, I'm just, I guess I'm forward thinking that if we are gonna put this item on the auction block, would whoever buys it be doing the same thing? Would they have to redo it?
No, they would not.
They just wanna pay for it because we did it.
Yeah, they probably wouldn't buy it without no one, though.
Oh, see, good answer.
They, yeah, nobody would touch it without an updated plan.
Good answer.
Because it lays out a project list and where where you are with your your lift stations and all that. If you didn't run it, if you stopped it right now, the drawback to that would be is if you picked it up five years from now, in five years, things change.
Right.
So you might end up going through the whole process all over again.
How long do they have to be updated?
Anytime you change your area and your influence changes, you should update. You should update them anyway periodically. This one, I think the last time's updated was 2013, and that was just to cover some minor stuff. This is the the actual, and it kind of gets your rates where they should be. They need to be looked at, so.
Yes.
Okay.
You can sell me a car anytime.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind.
So just wanted to bring Rob, since Rob's here, Avidex was over last week to look at the building, and so might as well let Rob.
So we went through the, you know, the four rooms. We're gonna get the Polycoms, and then, of course, the Commissioners' Chambers. One of the changes we talked to them about is instead of a fixed mounted TV, it'd be a drop down screen and projector, so that'll obviously result in a change order. Gordy and I also talked to him about, and their team's working on installing a Polycom in the main meeting room on the first floor. It'll seat 80 people, which means it goes out into the hall. The PA system is out in the hall. All of your meetings now have a Zoom component. And so having the biggest room not have that piece, and it's a little more complicated, whereas IT can install in some of the other rooms that don't have Polycoms because they're wired for it. It's just a matter of buying equipment. That big room has more complicated issues than IT can do. Acoustics and, you know, where you would set the head table and, you know, the chairs and the sound between the two rooms, the lobby versus the inside. So so we've asked them to put together that, as well as there's a meeting being set up between the contractors and Avidex to see if they can have a Polycom system and PA system work together. So it's kind of a unified audio function as well. So if they can do that, that will probably result in a change order. It seemed to make sense why we have the experts there to have the two biggest meeting rooms have that functionality.
Does anyone want to say?
Yeah, and I think you use that big room more than you think in terms of town hall meetings, public meetings, other entities may use it. It's a nice space. Grinch Hall's a big space, too, but this is a kind of the centerpiece.
I think the previous board also thought that was gonna be a committee, a community meeting room also, so.
So I think having that capability installed at the same time by the people to do it as a profession would make sense, so.
Okay. Okay. I'm sure it was your idea, right?
I don't know anything about it. They said they were gonna blame everything over there on me since you weren't there, so.
That's why I wasn't there.
You knew we were gonna do that. All right. Thanks, Gordy. Yeah, you're welcome. We'll continue on. Construction side, Old Mountain's really the big project going on right now, and they're still hammering hard rock to build subgrade, and hopefully they'll get through that, and we can move on to the easier digging. So but we always have a little bit of that in every job.
So the APE for that whole thing, that's that's the full extent of it?
Yeah.
That's that's been, they're they're working on the whole thing. I went to look to look at it, and I was like, I know I didn't feel, because it's how many miles?
One mile.
One mile.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah, it's pretty short.
Yeah, they're they're, they started at the beginning, and that's where the hard rock is. There's another spot toward the end that you can see. It's rocky. But the rest of it looks pretty simple and straightforward, kind of the middle. So but they're still hammering. Uh, let's see. Not really anything going on in our safety projects. West Darlin', Roosevelt, we have our contracts and bonds that are either being sent or in the hands of the contractors to be filled out in return. On the design side, really, our our design section is off for one reason or another this week, so we're not making much forward progress on anything this week. Although courthouse parking lots, trying to get those squared away, the design of those, so we have those ready to go, and we have our Click-It Path path that is gonna take a bit of coordination with parks, state parks, and Wash Dot to get our permits for the connections at either end. Maintenance side, the East End crew is working on completing Estev Road down to our quarry, and then there's they're grading some roads in the central and eastern area, and then hot mix patching on Bickleton Highway, and we could do that for about.
Twenty years.
The rest of the year, yeah.
Yeah, I was still getting complaints like the day after you guys were done.
Yeah, there.
And it's, Cal, I told them, it's it's just one of those things that's gonna be that way for a while.
Yeah, we we took care of the worst stuff after we talked to you, and then they're back. They've started back at that same area and are working back this way from there, so it'll be better, but it won't be good until we rebuild it.
Right. What is ballpark idea on cost to rebuild that section? Just throw out a number on the.
Uh, three miles. Yeah, I think we're looking at doing it in a couple different phases. So I think it's around one, five, we do it with our own crews and break it into pieces. Because we looked at granting it, doesn't have enough traffic volume to score high enough.
Oh, I see.
So that's the big issue for us to try to get it to grant, because I looked at doing it a couple different times.
So if we try to break it into pieces and do it ourselves, total price is a mil and a half or a mil and a half.
Yeah, approximately. Yeah, over three, something like we did duly, if you're familiar with how we did that. Broke it up into different sections. So basically what you would do is you'd come in, you chop it into thirds, and our crew would do it in a third. A year, a year.
It didn't. What what happened to it last time? It got done, it didn't work, or weather caused it, or what's what's the, what, why is it the way that it?
It's just old and it's.
It was never built right.
It never built right. Never had a base under it.
Oh, so they fall apart.
Yeah.
Even though they look pretty when you're done, it's it's the structure.
The gravel stuff underneath there isn't correct like you did out on Darlin' by reading.
Yeah, right, exactly.
And the top ain't gonna hold, right?
Yes. Years ago, they just didn't have money, so if people complained about the dust in the road, and, you know, the idea was, okay, we could we could basically put a Band-Aid on it, and then this is what happens to your to your Band-Aid. If you do that, then you have higher volumes or heavier trucks. It lasts, even lasts. Yeah, so our our cost, if we go out to have a contractor do it, is around a million a mileish, so we can do it for a little less. But usually on a arterial, we like to try and get grant dollars, because there are dollars available, but I think the width and the traffic volume on this.
Yeah, mainly the traffic.
Can't give points. Yeah, it doesn't score high enough.
You're gonna learn the experience for me. This is good stuff.
Okay, white salmon. They are working on Shepler Road, so we extended the sewer. There was a piece on the end of our right away that just wasn't pushed to the end of the road, which was just a kind of a dirt road, gravel road. And so we did this, extended the sewer, and now we're completing the road, gravel road and paved surface on a short segment. So that's what they're up to this week, and I think they're gonna shoot it on Thursday. So it's just a few hundred feet, I think.
Yeah.
To get back to.
Very.
Facility side, I think as Rob talked, we're trying to coordinate all the AV work that's gonna take place throughout the building with what's still in the contract and then the new work that Avidex is gonna perform. Civil side contractor still working on the, trying to get curb and gutter in place, but trying to find drivers to deliver mix. It's pretty much been a two week delay to try and get mix, so then that's the new norm, just like we tried to get material from Texas to here for our striping contract. It's just, there's shortages of people that are drivers and want to work. I think on our chip seal project, they had a guy that was, they brought him back to haul oil that was in his, I don't know, mid to late seventies.
Yes.
Just because they can't, they can't find drivers either.
No.
So it's, uh, it's not good and not getting better.
All right.
So if you have a CDL, there's lots of work out there for you. Uh, let's see, flooring, the flooring went down in the electrical rooms and the storage rooms in the new building, finished carpentry. A lot of the solid surface countertops have been installed. We actually are changing the one up in the building and planning intake. It was really wide, and we've narrowed that up for the contractors changing that, so it's a reasonable size. Instead of about five feet wide, it's gonna be a little over three, which is more reasonable. Mechanical and electrical, electrical contractor is a little behind. They've been working weekends. They lost a few people last week, half their crew, I think. Medical stuff, and so hopefully they'll be back in another few days sometime this week. I think that's what they're hoping. But they're working Saturdays to catch up. Mechanical, the boiler room is the big push now. There's a lot of piping and equipment that goes in that room, and so they're they're fabricating. It's a fabricate on onsite, and so it's slow going, piece by piece. So that's occurring. I worked in the alley. They ran into some problems with, we have drainage. There really wasn't drainage back there, but all the roofs of the buildings on Main Street dump into the alley, and any typical year, it's a block of ice and snow back there, and the water just pools up, and we don't want that. So there are places where our building in the alley are close to the same grade. I mean, we start out actually lower, and then we're higher at the west end. And so we want to make sure all the water that gets in there drains out, and so putting in, we had originally planned some underground storm and catch basins and pipe, and because of all the utilities that are in there, too, we have to shallow that up, so we'll get some shallower catch basins, but we'll still get the drainage system that'll keep the water away from the building. So it, but that's one of the changes. There's a big concrete gutter that goes back there, and and just because we don't want to have the water in the building.
Or their building.
Or anybody's building, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so that's been a struggle to try and find something that will work and thread our pipes through all the utilities that are buried in that alley. Let's see, courthouse entry. We're open in the east entry, probably at the end of business today. It won't be open for, will be open tomorrow. The the two by four handrails that are on the far side will still be there because we're still manufacturing some railing. But this way, we get it open, so they can start actually demoing the south side, and then we'll do that one, finish that demo, the north side. The big one is now done. The vault's completed, the shelving is done, and they're placing stucco on the east side.
Is there gonna be a way for, because everybody that parks back here at the bank and beyond now goes around and comes in the south, are they gonna be able to come in the north?
Or? The north will still be open for a while until.
Get there from that way, though, is my point.
They'll they'll get from the east. They'll have to go all the way around. Yeah, and it's gonna be the same way with east, too. I mean, they'll, the parts, they'll be, when the parking lot gets closed, there'll still be access to it. But you'll have to go all the way around to the south, and there's a a path there that we've constructed.
Right.
So when the, when the parking lot out here gets closed. And we're we're several weeks away from that. I mean, just getting delayed on concrete, you know, it it pushes this out. You know, because they're slowed up over here trying to get curb and gutter, then sidewalk, then paving. It, the two week delays when you order concrete to when you get it, I mean, that really hurts any forward movement on that, getting that thing buttoned up. So it's a big deal. But we shouldn't be out here tearing this up for two to three weeks just because of the delays over here, so. But eventually. Yeah, the south is not that detailed as the rest of it, so it should go pretty quick. Our hope is to get it open as quickly as we can. But again, like Gordy said, our contractors running into concrete issues also. Okay, fairground. So fair is approaching. That's the next big event, and so far, the rules haven't changed. So I think they're still planning a full fair or as much of it as they can put together in the short notice. So we have a lot of work to get ready, our fillings and grounds people to do that. One of the things that aren't on here is we have several units at the Pioneer Center that we're trying to get replaced, heating and cooling. This is where we have more residential type units that were put into the building. They are at the end of their lives, a lot of them are. And so we have a couple in the health department is where we're most challenged. We lost one in senior services. We have two portable AC units running in there in their office space, and we have one that we fixed a couple weeks ago up in health, and it's now, it it died again, and basically, you know, the line sets froze up, the unit froze up. The unit has a pan underneath it as a secondary drain to catch anything, but the line set froze, and so when it thaws out, basically it starts shedding water along the way, and it's a long run to get to where the outside units are. So that's going across health ceiling, which means they end up with a rain shower in some locations.
Are these lines visible, or are they on the?
They're above the drop ceiling, so you can't see them, but.
We might have some drop ceiling repairs to do as well.
Yes, oh, yeah, but it makes it, you know, it's, we're we're gonna continue to experience things like this, and the, you know, the hot summer, as it's been, is just really taxing those old units that really aren't adequate for the space anyway.
Especially when they turn them down to the.
Yeah, it's just they're not, they're not commercial units, you know, that hurts us most. Yeah, but we 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 have a project to get them replaced, but.
Yes.
Not soon enough. Four of those this year at Pioneer Center, four next year, and so forth, because they're in a group, and they're all up in the attic. And we've, we had put entryways in, but if you gotta take, like, you have one here that needs, and one here, they're, like, they lined up. Well, this one might be the bad one, but the the opening's over here, so you need to take all four of them out, the other three to get this one out. So and a lot of, they're all in the same, they were all purchased at the same time, so you might as well just replace all of them, because if not, you'll be pulling the other ones back out again, and they only will handle so much of that, because again, they are old and they're not very good shape. And we have some here on this roof that are becoming very challenging to keep running. One of them happens to sit right over where we're sitting now, that we've had a lot of issues with, because again, they're reaching their length, too. Yeah, at least they're commercial units.
They are.
They have lived, lived up on the roof for a lot longer. Yeah, some of them are 30 years old or better, but that's what our capital project list now consists of, is unit replacement. Okay. So I think that's almost all of it. The radio is one extra item. Yeah, we're moving, again, we're moving forward. I got a little bit of a setback. My archaeologist hurt her foot, so she's not ready to walk in. She was supposed to head in tomorrow. She thinks that she'll be good to go next week, but there's just no way to drive in there. While there's a road that goes quite a ways up, it's an old road that hasn't been used in a while. There's no way we're driving in there. Not in today's current conditions, because it has taller grass on it and all that, so they're walking in, and then you have to walk in where the new road will go. Once I get her in there, then, you know, but we're gonna keep moving forward. I'm scheduling the surveyors to go in and also scheduling our consultant to go in to actually fly the bird, but you can see into Golddale from there, so. And then we'll work through the, through the lease agreement with the the conservation district.
Don't be nice to us.
I'm sure they, I talked to Lauren. He did confirm that we can't buy it because the grant won't allow for it. He said, you have to lease it. He said, we can't sell something that we just purchased with a grant. That's what he told me.
So is it a thousand year lease?
Well, that's what I told him.
About the year.
Oh, yeah, I told minimum would be 100 years. That's what we did in Click-It.
Yeah.
So like something similar, but I'm sure I can't.
But then we won't be using radio anyway.
Right, exactly. Exactly. All right, Click-It Mill Site. So just kind of a follow up. We had the restrictive covenants that in the report that we received back in March, DOE said we had to update. I sent it to the prosecutor, and they're like, well, we don't see that it actually calls out our parcel in the restrictive covenants, and we don't, we're not a signature of that, so she might be right. So I'm gonna call DOE to find out what's the story, because it lists the two parcels, and they're the parcels behind us or west of our property. So but that was the one thing in that report that we got said that we had to do. So then, you know, so we're working through that, and then we also still have, if, as we move forward, we still have the one building that's onsite that we would have to replace that's, you know, our ballpark estimate is 400,000, you know, what the actual cost is, I don't, I don't know, but that should cover any expense for hazardous material removal and the actual disposal of the building itself. So but those are the two things that are still hanging out there that we're working to resolve, at least one of them. So and there's, there's no, I guess there's no budget for the removal of the building, so that's right, still there.
So we have some money that we can take from economic development.
I woke him up.
And I don't know if Richard wants to add more to.
Yeah, we're still working through that and seeing how the properties can be treated and everything for just moving forward on the property, so.
I think we're also waiting on word on exactly the status of what kind of ownership we have.
Well, yeah.
Final word on whether it's crammed or not.
How long have we?
There isn't Greg.
Owned that? Piece of property down there. When did it fall into our possession? Does anybody know that?
Is that treasure or is it online right now?
Ninety nine, late nineties or early 2000s.
I am online, but I don't know the answer to the question. I heard it, but I I don't know off the top of my head what year.
Gordy thinks it's late nineties, early 2000s. That's close enough for me.
I think he's in the ballpark.
No, was Greg, was it you, or who is gonna be looking into the actual parcel and what we, who's the owner and what we can do with it?
We are trying to get that. That is on our to do list, but we have not got, we're, yes, we're working on the audit and some other things right now, but yes, we are trying to put a listing together. We'll have to get with Gordy eventually to look at how much money we've spent and so on and so forth as the owner of trust, because again, the property we believe now is in trust and held in trust of the taxpayers.
We believe, but we don't know.
Well, I mean, I think we're pretty comfortable with that, but we just need to go through and do some more work and research.
How does that work on the sale? Do we get recouped for our expenses before the trust people get paid out, or do we pay them out and we lose all of our money that we've spent on putting it out for sale?
Well, I think that's what we're gonna have to work with the prosecuting attorney and everything once we get this, because I don't think this has been handled the way we would handle other tax title property, knowing if it was tax title going forward now, I think we would have had that in the beginning. So, yeah, we gotta kind of figure out if it's a trust, we gotta figure out how much money we've spent and probably possibly recoup our money first before we would reimburse the taxpayer, the taxing districts, but we need to work with the PA on the interpretation, because it's foreclosure.
Thank you.
All right.
That's it on our list.
That's all the good news you got for us today?
That's it today.
Did you get the email from the Dillards in Washington?
Yes.
And we reached out and come back in touch with them?
We will. Jeff will go down and actually drive the road and then call them.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure. All right, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. See you later.
See ya.
See, now when they leave, I can offer you public works.
I'm all for that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, maybe start out with natural resources?
Start out with a good one.
All right, so.
Give it up for last.
I just didn't. So that's why I wanted to start him up on something he can't answer.
I don't know. I'm I'm not hearing very well this morning.
Perfect.
Sorry, gotta speak up. All right, so spot and all, the new proposed critical habitat rule is out for public comment. Comment deadline is September 20. Whitney's going over it, seeing, you know, what comments we want to submit, if any, and I think we'll it's likely we'll end up with many of the same comments we had on the last one, but we'll see. Because they've removed, there was a new rule proposed in January. It was supposed to go, in fact, in January, it was withheld, so now they're back with this redraft. And all the land in Washington that was getting pulled out is not getting pulled out.
Now it's just the Oregon stuff again.
Yeah, and a small fraction of that.
And we were gonna hope for 40 or 50,000.
Yeah.
Instead, we got 3.2 that didn't stick.
Yeah, and they recently determined that the all warrants uplisting from threatened to endanger, so that
lovely.
Changes the game somewhat somewhat. One question I have for you today. We prevailed in in the litigation previously. That's what resulted in the rule that was withheld. We've got a settlement on that, and the county was partnered with two other counties appealing that rule. The settlement amounts that are coming to us are $44,666. In 2016, when we got a contract with a special deputy prosecutor to. Um, in twenty sixteen, uh, when we got a contract with a special deputy prosecutor to. Support this litigation, the board put, uh, twenty-nine thousand into my budget, the supplemental budget. Uh, to address this, it, I believe it was out of cumulative reserve. I've talked with prosecutor Cornell, and he's in agreement with me. Probably the place needs to go back to is cumulative reserve. So, the treasurer need a, a, a number for that if the board agrees and.
So, did you say we spent twenty-nine and we got forty-four back?
Well, I haven't totaled it all up. There's other funding. There's another five thousand that was added later for negotiating this or some.
Something about a wash, maybe?
Yeah, probably. Yeah, yeah, so we had some special studies done, economics and then some biology stuff done to support our, our submittals to.
I would think that's where it came from. That's where it should go back to.
And that was Susan that we hired?
Yeah. And then there was a, uh, law firm in DC that was involved, that money paid for them as well, and, and again, there were some special reports that were done. Uh, to support the litigation, so. Anyway, I'm not, I have not talked with Skamania County or Lewis County and seen about. You know, what they're submitting. Be interesting to see. I'm not expecting we'll probably join that again, but. We may wanna send in our own comments. Okay, so that's it on that. Uh. Here, a week or so ago, Whitney was contacted by Ecology regarding a homeowner. Yeah, down in Muckay, I guess, area, uh, as well as gone dry. Uh, they face a fairly steep cost to deepen it. Uh, contacted Joel Mattson and his team to see if there may be something that they can do to help. Uh, and it might be that the fund they've got for minor home repairs that's out, I think maybe up to seventy-five hundred dollars. Could be available for that. They might have some other ideas. That's not gonna cover the cost of the well deepening, but it takes a bite out of it. Uh, so I, we have not heard how that worked out, but that would be interesting to know, because I wouldn't be surprised. You know, if the drought continues, we're gonna have more people that are financially challenged to deepen wells, uh, so.
Yeah, that would be, I, I would be curious. If that worked.
Sounds like minor home repair to me.
Sounds like major home repair, that it could be covered minorly, but. The good bit.
Minorly in part. Uh. And regarding the drought, uh, Whitney's posted some links to Ecology's webpage with information on, on drought relief. Most of which in terms of financial is available for public entities. But private entities might be interested in ability to do, uh, your emergency. Water right changes or transfers, so they can move from one field to another or. Lease water from a neighbor or something to try to salvage something, but. It's, it's pretty deep into the season now, though. And that's.
Where'd she posted it?
Pardon?
She posted on our webpage.
It's on, in the natural resources department.
Uh-huh.
Uh, left, right-hand side of the screen toward the bottom.
Oh, okay, got it.
All right.
Uh, Whitney's online, right?
Yep.
Uh, Whitney, how, how's things going with, uh, South Gifford-Pinto Collaborative and the discussions with this new owl uplisting?
Um, there hasn't been much discussion about it as of yet. Um, it was mentioned very briefly a few months ago, when it was looking like it might get uplisted. Um, but it hasn't been discussed since they did the warranted but precluded for uplisting decision.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And there's a, you know, we might add something. There's a, a report published recently with the results of. Of, uh, the barred owl removal program that's been going on for a decade and, and it was effective in. Helping spotted owls reclaim territory, so, uh. Not dug into that report yet, but that might provide some.
Would you forward that to you?
Pardon?
Would you forward that to you?
Sure.
Still got a love for the old natural resources.
Yeah, give it up.
Once you got involved with owls, you just.
Friendly little buggers anyway.
We need to get a meeting, speaking of listed species up in, up in Glenwood. Because of, you know, we've lost a source of water that's been going into that basin historically, in my understanding that, you know, with the drought and that loss of water resource. Habitat is challenged and the frog are being impacted, so.
A lot of the owls are probably being impacted too. They should probably turn that water back on and save them owls.
Especially if they're located near the fires. Uh, for economic development, uh, you know, as you were at the EDA board meeting, the, uh. EDA is gonna have a, a subcommittee take a deeper dive into that buildable lands inventory housing needs analysis. Richard's working on trying to schedule a meeting in that committee, you know, there's Dave Sauter, Commissioner Sauter, and then the three mayors. Uh, one of our representatives is a banker and another that does development will be on that to. You know, we'll revisit that, uh, as a full board in October. Uh, we're working with KBH on the Reds project. One interesting little project that the city has, the city of Goldendale. Has on its infrastructure list, we, I talked to Mayor Cannon yesterday about assisting him. And it's using, I believe, the Dingman well. Uh, as a input source for a aquifer storage and recovery project. And that project, uh, potentially could have a small-scale hydro. Of course, you've got quite a bit of head between the. Between the Simcoe mountain sources and, and that well. Uh, the, probably the next step is to, to lay out a, a pilot study, uh, something to define that, that aquifer and whether or not it can serve as a. A containment, that's an adequate containment vessel for.
Do we have another well there in Dingman? That area? Do we have another well that's in?
I don't know. I have not looked at it.
Because the Dingman well's the one, uh. Out by the.
I believe it's up east of town, like sort of. Go if you go out Simcoe Drive, just keep going across.
Okay, it's the one on the, uh, next to the rock mining location?
Yeah.
That's Dingman?
I believe that's it. We need to revisit that. The city had a, a report, uh. Uh, looking at that, you know, it's about ten, five years old or so, but so, see if we can get that. Explore that project, but man, Whitney again helped with that, so she's. Got other priorities, one of which is their wastewater treatment plant that they need to upgrade. Um, Federal Economic Development Administration's got some noticed funding opportunities out. We're exploring those. Looks like a couple of them. Uh, might fit for some projects that we could do. They, they've got like three billion for this. Some of it's directed strictly at states, some of it's at coal communities, but there are a couple of. Uh, programs within that, uh, American Rescue Plan umbrella that might work for us. So, looking into that.
Might work for us to do projects on the EDA list or projects that we don't have on the EDA list yet. What you're thinking there.
There are larger programmatic sorts of things, so if we wanted to take a look at capitalizing on. Uh, the concept of this being a renewable energy area. Uh, for example, we should be get, be able to get projects that are users of renewable energy. Uh, I mean, just currently, there's a, um. Request for information for a data center campus. Uh, it's three data centers, uh, they've got three billion to spend over the next fifteen years to develop these. Uh, for us to find sites. Uh, that would soon, there are some around Golden Dale, but it's gonna take some work. They're just at the edge of Golden Dale, so how do you get infrastructure? We're not gonna be able to respond in a, a quick turnaround, which I think is the tendency, when they're wanting. The information, very detailed information on this, we're just not ready for that, and it's a shame to let that go, because. They're giving extra consideration to areas that have renewable energy and it's. You know, pretty straightforward, a clear path to siding more renewable energy if that's what they wanna do, so we could be very attractive. In that, and it's something we should be able to do in the future, so that, how, how do we go about putting together a program to get. Uh, some of the ancillary job and, uh, revenue benefits off of this renewable energy that's happening in county. Um, Port of Click-It, went out and visited, Richard and I visited their, their new facility the other day. We're gonna see what we can do to help them market that. For example, we've got access to. Uh, websites like Zoom Prospector that we could post that on and, you know, anyway, try to give them a hand with, with marketing that and, and others and. You know, that's been a little more hands-off in the past, in terms of helping there, but it, you know. We'd like to see the, you know, port get populated by businesses. Richard's heading to Spokane tomorrow this afternoon. For the Economic Development, Washington Economic Development Association's summer conference. So he'll be out for a few days. Uh, there he'll be able to talk with, uh, the regional economic development. Uh, person for Washington, uh. And talk about, you know, the upcoming Reds perhaps, and, and then, uh, maybe a little bit about the airport project he's been working with them on that. We're stalled, uh, over the, uh, trying to get an agreement that would work for the community college and, you know, who funds that building, that whole question, so. Look at our options there, so hopefully those are productive conversations. And I think that's my summary.
That's it? Did you have anything else?
You got another forty-five minutes. Keep talking.
Oh, man. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of little things off on the side. I know that we're also assisting. Um, with, with, with McCad, or said, strategy every five years, they do a strategy. The comprehensive economic development strategies. They may be facilitator, not a wise decision, as I argue with the. Attend my meetings.
That's not neutral.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, quite biased, but, um, no, so, yeah, we, we've been helping with them. Um, and then in regards to, I, I know David's already hit on. A lot of different projects we're doing for, for recruitment or, uh, retention purposes. When it comes to workforce development. Uh, I got a board meeting coming up with South Central, and then we're gonna start looking at some, some future projects here on the, on the later end of. Of this year. Uh, we've already hit up, uh, aerospace company earlier this year. Um, with fifteen employees, and we're gonna start looking at what we can do here on the east end of the county. So towards the end, it, some of it is timing, because I know we've done this in the past with workforce development, especially with our ag folks. They've got like maybe a three-week window for two different months, and either you hit it or you don't, otherwise they're just swamped, so. Um, yeah, we're gonna be, we're also gonna be exploring some of that as well, so. And then also, um, we do have a potential, um, economic. Development funds request that's coming down the pipeline from one of the local fire districts in regards to some of their bunker gear, so. I'll be, I'll be assisting them with, with that as well.
Did they, I, you reached out, did they get back to you?
Yes, yes, we, we actually just spoke literally right from Cameron.
Bunker gear or wildland firefighting gear?
I did, it's pretty much the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I was told bunker gear this morning.
Bunker gear is what we wear when we're going into a house.
Okay.
Which is the big, heavy, expensive. Uh, stuff. I was, are we talking about Click-It, by the way?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, I was told it was wildland gear, which is much cheaper.
Okay.
Uh, that they were having a shortage of. So, interesting, maybe they're having a shortage on bunker gear as well.
Yeah, they, they said that the, the gear that they have, it's all been, like, it's all been designated to, to some different folks, but. They've got some newer fighters and stuff like that that need larger gear, just the sizes just don't, don't fit, so. But regardless, we're gonna be, we're gonna be assisting them.
I was one of those when I started, my feet didn't fit the boots they had, so, yeah, it was three hundred and fifty dollars for a pair of boots.
Yeah. Yeah, they said for one whole set, it's about two thousand dollars, so.
Wildland gear was a little different, and that's what I thought we were.
Yeah.
They need what they need.
Yeah. And we're, and we're not just looking at some different funds that the county might have, we're also gonna be looking at stuff from FEMA and stuff like that, so.
We have grants, so.
Yeah.
Do, do you know what happened at the city council meeting last night relative to the wastewater treatment plan?
I did not, um, watch it. It's in my. To go back and watch it.
Okay.
But, uh, I didn't watch it live.
Right, I, I mentioned to you that, I, I think they get a, a loan for the, what, three million or something like that, and. A local match of two hundred and two or four thousand dollars, and Mike mentioned they might ask for point oh nine dollars for that, so. Need to get that application, so I don't know what, what they did last night.
Yeah, check on that. Long overdue project.
You have anything else for her? Steph?
I don't think so.
All right.
All right.
Go for it and do a good one.
Yeah, do we, actually I have a question. Do we reach out to the fire departments? I know that would be a dangerous thing. Ask them if they needed anything or do we?
Historically, no.
Talk to us, because if you reach out, they're gonna find something.
Yeah, so historically, no. Way back, way back years ago, when, prior to the nine-one-one.
Right, when we had a community development fund, then, then that was the common thing, yeah.
Then we, then there was a outreach and that sort of thing. Now it's sort of responding to emergencies or when folks need dollars for. Match on grants or something, trying to leverage it.
And I, and I've spoken to a lot of our fire districts here, and they understand that they're, the, the fund isn't as well funded as it was in the past. And so they, when they do come, it, it's typically because it's.
Where did it seem?
Like, yeah, they, they need it, and it's, uh, they're, they're looking at other sources.
That's why I had you reach out, is because Click-It reached out in Rule Seven. Gave them all their extra gear. In Centerville, we gave them all our extra gear, and I didn't know if they had enough. Now that's why I had you guys reach out.
What, did something happen there, or?
They are so understaffed down there that it's out of control, so my hope is now that they're finally getting some volunteers.
Okay.
If there, if there was a fire down there last year, there'd be a problem.
Okay.
So my hope is that they're getting enough volunteers now that, now they don't have enough clothes for them.
Okay.
Which would be a good thing.
Uh, I got an application for an appointment to the Water Conservancy Board from Scott Andrews, and. He's been on the board for a while, and so I will forward that to you, Lee, and we'll see if we can.
Will to do it again, huh? Good job.
Willing to do it one more time, but I.
Love for others.
I think this'll be the last time for him, so.
While he's done, make sure he finds his replacement.
Oh, there you go. Yes, that's a, that's quite a, quite a committee assignment, because there can be a lot of work behind that.
Hi, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Lots of training too.
Yeah.
You.
Well, it's not something that anybody can just apply for and do. You better already have a good knowledge.
You got forty hours of training before.
Yep.
Well, I would hope you have a good knowledge going into that training.
Eight every year, and yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have anything else?
And I'm out next week, by the way.
Congratulations, sir.
Yeah, all right. See ya.
That's all good.
Matt?
I gotta go through the bills.
You're going to, uh, recess until one PM. Being one o'clock, we are going to reconvene the meeting for the regular business meeting for the Click-It County Council on August third, twenty twenty-one. Uh, if everybody, uh, would stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. More than any, under God, and visible for liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that Commissioners Anderson and Christopher are present and Commissioner Soder is on vacation. We need to move on to the business agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the business agenda as presented.
I will step down and second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Commissioner meeting minutes for July 6, July 13, July 20, and July 27 as presented.
I will step down and second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We will move into Citizen trauma until 1:30. You will have three minutes per person to speak on any topics that you choose. We will go back and forth. We'll start in the Commissioner chambers and then we'll go on to the Zoom. Either of you like to speak, I need your name and address.
Hello, my name is Ivy Valarde. I'm at 128 Big Springs Road. And I know it's been recorded. Do you want us to sit at the table once again or?
Probably would be a good idea just to make sure everybody on Zoom can hear you.
Again, thank you for the opportunity. And I understand that's three minutes. So I will be briefing.
I'm sorry, I'm not playing on my phone. I'm trying to find where you live. Big Springs Road?
Big Springs Road. Thank you again for the opportunity to address you today. When I last attended your meeting on July 12, 2021, you acknowledged the difficulty of the current state of affairs with Steve Shields and his unpermitted and illegal gun range. You mentioned that several of you were attending meetings and workshops to address the inconsistencies and lack of enforcement language in the codes of compliance. I am here to ask where you're at with this process and how things are progressing. I know there are more and more neighbors as concerned as I with the current situation, but I can only speak for myself. As each week goes by and nothing is done to stop this illegal business, my frustration and concern grows. As I mentioned, any home and property within hearing distance of the noise that this gun range creates has lost considerable value. How can it possibly be fair that one person with total disregard for laws of our county be permitted to continue one more day of operation? Why can there not be a cease and desist order issued until he follows the rules of applying for a CUP? He already has run this illegal gun range for over two years. Why is it allowed to continue? What rights do we as citizens of this county have to stop this operation? A civil suit, criminal lawsuit? Do we have the right to get the state of Washington involved? And speaking to someone who knows Shields well, I am told that Shields extends an invitation that I should go visit him and let him know of my concerns. He stated that no one has talked to him about this. When I have stated to you and others that maybe I, as a reasonable neighbor, should go visit him, I am told that this is a bad idea. Don't do it. And I now agree with that assessment. It might be unwise and possibly unsafe for me to visit him alone. Who of you are willing to go with me to visit Shields? I've heard it said many times, and even from you on July 12, that this is a complaint driven county. Well, here I am before you, along with many past registered complaints from others, that this gun range has no place in a rural agricultural neighborhood. It violates zoning ordinance, and we are complaining and want to be heard. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing of your progress on this issue. I will leave a copy of this with the office so that it's
I was reading the email as you were reading.
Ah, okay. Is that appropriate to leave a copy with the last?
Question.
It is. I'll add it to the record. Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, Zoom, star six, raise your hand. First person that we see come on, I will. Pat Arnold, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Following up on what the last speaker said, I want to talk a bit about the compliance situation. There is an establishment in Trout Lake that's been here for some period of time that is operating openly, operating a kind of a low rent under canvas. Been doing this for a long time. Their website is very blunt about, yes, we offer accommodations to the public. Anybody can come, you can camp. And the current time, their website says that if you've been vaccinated for COVID, you may not come, which is kind of not a compliance issue for the county. But it is a bit of an issue for those of us who live here because they're inviting people into the community deliberately who are unvaccinated. So that is a bit of an issue for us. But the the thing is that if I were to write a complaint about this establishment, and until somebody wrote me about it yesterday, really hadn't looked at their website, I did not know the extent to which they are open and above board about being a recreational facility, open to the public. Obviously, set rules, they take reservations and so on. So they hold public events. They started a few years ago to get a conditional use permit for the public events, but then they backed away from it because their sanitary facilities were not going to be sufficient for public events such as large gatherings for meetings or, you know, an informational event or something, overnight camping and stuff. And they backed away from that. So this is the kind of thing where compliance is is really important. And I I just, I'm, I guess I'm wanting to reinforce that it isn't enough for the county to just be complaint driven. As you guys probably know, I've, we're friends with the White Salmon, has filed some complaints over the years. And basically, the resolution, there hasn't been a good resolution. In in some cases, a compliance officer has been sent and the landowner has been required to, these are mostly shorelines things to replant. There's been no follow up so that like they replant one year and the next year they're out mowing again. And and the shoreline is in the same situation that it was in a state of violation. So I, you know, I have some experience filing complaints that are not followed up on and also filing complaints that have been followed up on. But the purpose of the of the ordinance is not held. And so I, it, the compliance issue, I know it's complicated one for you, and I know that you're working on it. And it affects a lot of things. But I just, I guess I'm making a pitch for you to take a more kind of measured view. It's not the, it's not the application of rules to people's actions. It's the application of the principles and the the common good that matters. And if somebody is doing something that is detrimental to the common good, it's not because they're in violation of a rule, it's because they're in the violation of the purpose of the rule. And so a complete Okay, all right, I'll stop. But that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pat. All right, next up in chambers.
Your name and where you live? Joseph Bradwell. I'm at 1212 Ownby Road, here in Goldendale. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here as one of the many concerned citizens and neighbors for of an illegal gun range in the Old Mountain Road area. Approximately one month ago, starting around 3:00 PM on a Saturday, large weapons fires started up. And I'm talking automatic weapon. We're not talking just little pistols or something going off and bump stock weapons, which I've mentioned to the sheriff, of high caliber going continuously. I personally felt like I was standing in the Gaza Strip. It was that bad. It was continuous from 3:00 PM till 2:00 AM. Okay. And it was totally consistent. A call to the 911 dispatch led nowhere. The woman told me that she'd gotten several calls, that there was nothing they could do. They were training officers and that they had a permit. Now, I don't know about the training of officers, and that's all couldn't find if that's what they're doing. But I I do believe the county spent a lot of money on a firing range to be training officers. And they don't need to be doing this out in a rural private area using automatic weapons till 2:00 AM in the morning. If you go to their website, I'm not sure if you know what their website is. It's a cerevis-training-com. I I found out that they will be holding night operations tactical both that evening, that Saturday, and then Sunday, which, again, they started up on Sunday at 6:00 PM, going continuously till 1:00 AM. And again, calls to 911 totally useless. And as far as she was concerned, there's nothing that could be done. So this is way out of control, you guys. And I've been out there for a long time, and they've been doing this for over two years. And night operations are brand new. But all weekend, during the weekends especially, it's all day long, just blasting going on. And, you know, it's one thing to to be shooting your gun. It's another thing to be holding a commercial operation in a situation that does not deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to Zoom, star six, unmute yourself or raise your hand. Forty participants. Somebody.
Yeah, Commissioner.
I can hear you. Can we get your name and where you live?
Yeah, it's Rosedale Demick, 55 Tucker Hill Road. And I just wanted to bring to your attention an article that was written in the Wall Street Journal earlier this week, behind the rise of US solar power in the mountains. And it goes on to explain the detriment that is going on. It says that three fourths of the polysilicon, which is a component in solar panels, are produced by Chinese coal power factories, and increased need from solar companies like Cypress Creek, that's putting their proposals before the county soon. That's going to increase the production. And that's calling on them, China, to produce and and use more of their coal fire plants, keep up with that demand. And in the article, it says that this would make the solar industry one of the world's most prolific polluters. And I just want you to perhaps reevaluate your economic development plan as the United States moves forward with plans to convert Quikatet County into the renewable capital for Washington State. But I don't think that Washington's or Quikatet County residents want to contribute to being prolific polluters and the contribution of that. And so it's my hope that you will evaluate your economic plan and seek other options. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you mute that? All right, back into the room. Anybody else want to speak?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Lisa Evans. I live in White Salmon, Washington. First, I would like to say, I live in that Northwestern Park area. And as you pull out on the 141, the traffic is really horrendous, and it's only gotten worse over the years. I just want to make sure that you guys are aware of that. I don't know if trees can be trimmed back further. You know, I've got two teenagers driving now and another one on the way. And it just scares me knowing that these logging trucks come flying through. Often, when I pull out.
You're talking right on the road where it goes on the body where.
Yeah, like where you come out of Northwestern Park on the 141, like I'll pull out and then somebody will be on my bumper in no time at all, even though I've taken the time, you know, I'm I've driven for many years. I think I'm a pretty good driver. And so I'll really watch and be cautious. But I'll pull out and all of a sudden, I'll have somebody on my bumper right in my rearview mirror and scares the heck out of me. And like I said, especially with younger drivers out there, somebody getting T-boned by a logging truck keeps me awake at night. So I just wanted you guys to be aware of that. I don't know what's being looked at right now.
And it comes down to the easement lane. They can't cut outside the easement. They they looked at that 10 years ago.
Okay. Yeah, just something, something to be aware of. I don't have exact data, but I know anecdotally, we are seeing a lot more accidents in that area, that intersection. And then second, so do I have three minutes total?
No.
Is that what it is? Okay. So I'll just make this quick, too. Ooh, I could give out a lot of information, don't even really know where to start, other than what I'm here to do is just inform you that as the school year approaches, a lot of parents are organizing, they're meeting in their living rooms and their backyards, and they're showing up at the school boards and speaking. And they're simply asking the question, why can't masks be optional? Why is we, why is, you know, why as parents can we not make medical choices for our children that are the healthiest? The parents are not arguing one way or the other. They're simply asking, why can't they be optional? So you make your choice and then respect my ability to make my choice. And we're just seeing the beginning of the parents are organizing and getting together, and they're coming to the school boards, and they've been very respectful so far. And, you know, the school boards per the RCWs have broad discretionary power within their school districts to make decisions. So mandates do not override RCWs. And the state cannot threaten the school districts to take away their funding, and they cannot threaten them with liability insurance. That is illegal. So I just wanted to, you know, essentially, what I'm trying to do here today is just kind of bring your awareness that there are a lot of parents that are very concerned as we roll into the school year. And there's going to be a lot of changes to our school districts as kids are pulled out, taken other places and homeschool. So just my ask is, you know, that you're aware of the situation that when parents reach out, like the Cascadia Commonwealth sent an email, if you could please respond to that. And then number three, just, you know, our county, protect our county, protect our children, protect our health. Thank you.
Back to Zoom. Raise your hand, star six, unmute yourself. We will call on you.
I will make a comment that it does look like you have a few new faces running for school board this year. And that's actually a good thing. Now, if a lot of these people would have thrown their name on the ballot, might not have this problem right now. Next year.
Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to make a comment? I'm not seeing one.
Huh?
Don't see me. I don't see anyone. Forty two people. Yeah, we'll go back to the room then. Come on up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Dave Bart of Goldendale. Talk a little bit about solar issue. I'm going to hand off to Lee Snell a couple of emails that I got from public records requests. One, well, one of them from FSAC. This one speaks a little bit to Commissioner Anderson's hesitancy because he was worried that solar companies would simply go to FSAC for approval. In fact, this email dated 5th of January this year indicates that there is was considerable interest before that time from Cypress Creek Renewables, who's holding the meeting tonight. So my guess is, since Invenergy hasn't even talked to the county, as far as I know, or at least as of last week, they're all going FSAC. FSAC will at least consider county ordinances. This is an attorney letter relative to the Goose Prairie Project in Yakima County. And one of the things that he references in this letter is that they work with the county, even though they're going through an FSAC application to make sure that what they're doing meets the county's requirements. So for example, even one item like saying 25% of any individual tract of land to be committed to solar panels is something that in FSAC, I imagine would negotiate, and they might raise it, but there wouldn't be necessarily, as it states in this lower part of this email, two and a half million solar panels on 6,000 acres. So I I don't think it's too late for the Commissioners to do something in regards to ordinances. I encourage you to do that. The the second part is relative to that today on your agenda. It looks like you are going to approve the renaming of the Wind Energy Exemption Fund. So it, my question at that time. So um it, my question at that time, it uh one of my questions that I have and have got a partial answer from the Department of Revenue is how long do they have to apply for that? Because the money that goes into that account you, I believe are going to commit to a trust fund, which makes sense because the sales tax on all these items, I'm going to just use this number, let's say they do put two and a half million solar panels in. And they are, the sales tax on those at a hundred dollars a piece ends up being something like a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in a trust fund if I did my math right. You can check me on math any day. I'm not a math student. But if there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in that trust fund, right now it appears in the Department of Revenue as though they will be able to wait as late as December 31st, 2029 to apply if the project is ongoing to get that rebate, which means considering the dollar that is in my wallet right now is only worth 93 cents relative to one year ago today. Imagine what it will be like in nine more years. So the county is kind of being held over a, a barrel in keeping money in a trust fund because it can't afford to repay it if it's asked for, but the money is dropping. You know, ever, ever more quickly in value. So I would encourage you to find out what the county can do to either lessen the amount of money you have to put in the trust fund and be able to utilize sales tax money. Uh because the sales tax from the solar company projects is of no use to us, at least until January 1st of 2030. Thank you for your time.
And you said you didn't like numbers.
That's emails.
Okay, so you didn't like the number. All right, we will go back to Zoom land. Star six to unmute yourself. Raise your hand or just start talking since nobody else has. Cause we're running out of people here in the room.
There you go. Commissioner, Commissioner, can I, can I add something?
Can we get your name?
Uh Rosedemic Tucker Hill Road.
Are you allowing?
Just to piggyback on.
She didn't use.
Sorry, just to piggyback on what Dave Varda has, has mentioned. Um yesterday I was out at the Lund Hill facility and I noticed that this project comes very close to the county road. And you know, there's examples of, you know, some, some ordinances that we would like to have more clear um more clarity on how close these projects can be to these county roads. It appears that they are only, you know, 20 feet away from the county road. Um and just clear setbacks. Um we're not, you know, we're not asking a lot, but just some simple, some simple ordinances to be in place like setbacks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Is there anything you would like to say in response to anyone since?
No, well, I would, I would respond to Dave that your tax numbers are way lower than they actually are. We are looking at it, we are working with it. We're trying to change the way the State Department of Revenue does its taxing. That would take in act of the state legislature. Next year is a short session, so I doubt they're going to hear it. But hopefully they can at least put a working group together to do some studies on that so we don't end up getting screwed. Um and make a change for the better in the future long session. So we're aware of it.
Anything to anyone else?
Run good.
All right. If there is anybody else that would like to speak, go ahead and just start speaking. Until then, uh we'll sit here and get some work done for the next six minutes.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Sure.
I'll ask a question about an update. Is that something that you're going to be touching upon um during this session or is this something that you could address?
Uh we had a workshop last Thursday that discussed a lot of this and sent some recommendations to the prosecutor to look into and haven't heard back yet. So I'm sure they're waiting to get time between court cases to look over those recommendations. So don't, other than what we gave you last week, I don't have an update other than we did have ours law workshop and it's in committee, let's say. I wasn't in that committee, so I don't know the answer.
And then I did ask a question. Is anybody on the commission board willing to go visit Steve Shields with me or has that something?
I've personally walked in and talked to Steve Shields many times. He owns High Desert Cartridge Company right over here across from Simcoe. I don't know that I would drive to his house uninvited, but walking in that building, I don't think you have anything to fear. I'm not going with you, but um I think you'll be fine. May not be the answer you want, but.
Yeah, I'd want to visit him at his property.
I've never been to his property.
Elaine Harvey?
Hello, Elaine Harvey Goldendale. I just wanted to um talk about solar ordinances because I've been um linked into the Douglas County and their solar moratorium and creation of solar ordinances in their county. I talked to their county planner and um who assisted in creating those ordinances. They had a solar moratorium similar to ours. They had many residents, county residents come and test, testify such as ours. We had high numbers of um county residents who weren't supporting solar and who wanted solar ordinances. And because of the commissioners listened to their residents to the, to the people they represent and are supposed to, to um support. They decided to create ordinances for solar projects that are proposed in, within the county. And this was done in, you know, in less than a month's time. It didn't cost millions of dollars and it didn't take months to accomplish this. And this is, this is an example that I think our county should take. Because we already have two, um oh, we have one solar project already in the works and we have one application on going on now. And we have future ones on Night Road and other places, but um for the protection of the residents, for the protection of the land, the environment, cultural resources. Um I believe this could be done because Douglas County um explicitly put in their protection of um sage goss critical habitat. And also cultural resources for tribal members, identified cultural sites that tribal, tribal members utilize. And, and so I'm thankful that they did that because I'm a Yakima member and I travel up there and I gather feeds there. So um I'm, I'm appreciative of what they've done in respect for the treaty rights of the Yakima Nation. Cause our seeded lands go all the way up to Wenatchee and down to Oregon. So I think that solar ordinances could, could be created and signed by the commissioners and put into law such as the Cypress Creek projects already going to FSAC it sounds like. And we have no ordinances in places, so they can do as they wish, just like the cut process for the under canvas. We can't trust the process. We have, we have short line master plans and critical ordinances aren't even in, in final draft form. And I know that because I work with Yakima Nation and, and um I know that the critical ordinances aren't even in complete and it's not even completed. And the cut process goes back to those documents. So um that's what I wanted to say today. Thanks.
Thank you, Elaine.
Yeah, 7211, that's.
7211, um we'll give you three minutes uh and it's 1:30. Go ahead.
This is Greg Wagner from Goldendale with C Citizens Educated About Solar Energy. I just got off the telephone with Douglas County Land Services Supervisor, a man named Mark, and asked him about how did Douglas County enact, write and enact their ordinances? They did it all in-house, Mr. Anderson. They didn't use a public hearing examiner. They wrote their own ordinances. They said it took about $200 to do it and they did it in two weeks. So what's wrong with our commissioners? Why can't you guys do it? You claim it'll take two years and millions of dollars. Dan and Jacob there all sent emails that says it's going to cost too much money and take too long. That's just not the truth. You just don't want to do them. Why won't you represent the citizens? Do what we want and write the ordinances for solar. It's up to you three guys to look out for the county, not for the solar companies, for the citizens of the county and for the good of the county. That's your job. That's what you're supposed to do. And the under canvas project, I listened to 14 hours of testimony last week. I didn't see Anderson or Soder there. Dan came in the last 45 minutes on Friday. After listening to our planning director say, I don't know, to almost every question she was asked makes me question why she's our planning director. They ask her questions about her duties as a CEP rep and all kinds of other questions about her jobs. And I don't know was the primary answer. Or I rely on information from Public Works or from the applicant. She never left her office to even go look at the under canvas project and Oak Ridge Road. That's not what a planning director should do, should be involved with the project and not just take input pieces of paper. Especially to rely upon the applicant, the under canvas people. It's doubtful that they're going to give accurate information. It's a shame that our commissioners don't get involved with such major issues in the county, under campus, a gun range, the intruding solar. Now we learned that Cypress Creek is wanting to use FSAC. Cypress Creek tells us they only have a 1,225 acre project. That's what they're going to tell us tonight at the meeting at the Grange. But in reality, they want to talk about 6,000 acres of solar proposed by Night Road with FSAC. We need ordinances. We have ordinances. They have to abide by our ordinances, even if they try to go through FSAC. All you guys know that. You're just ignoring all the facts. I don't know why. It just doesn't appear you work for the citizens and that's who you are paid by and elected by. This is the citizens. So I suggest you start working for the citizens and not big solar. Thank you.
You, Mr. Wagner. Being one after 1:30, um we are going to close public comment. Because there's 40 people on here. Is there anybody else who wishes to give public comment? And we will um add an extra public comment period um later on in the agenda. Okay, so we won't add public comment later on in the agenda. We're going to move on to the next part on the agenda which uh is the Washington Gorge Actions Program's Executive Director, Leslie Naromore. Are you there, Leslie? I thought I saw you.
She is. I'm here. Good afternoon, commissioners. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, so I just wanted to come and briefly share with you about a new funding source that is going to be available for both Clickatot and Skamania Counties. And it is money that is being made available out of the state document recording fee funds to pay for the leasing of hotel and motel rooms to house homeless people. It can also be used for rental assistance for people experiencing homelessness and outreach. And we, Washington Gorge Action Programs currently does all of these things on behalf of our two county service area. And for Clickatot County, there will be 132,951 dollars available. Now, the county itself has the option to do what's called opting in and administer those funds. Or if the county chooses not to do that, those funds would come to Washington Gorge Action Programs because we are the consolidated homeless grant holder. So I just wanted to make sure that you, as the commissioners, were aware that this new funding is going to be available to assist homeless people in our county and see if you had any questions or if you knew if the county was wanting to administer these funds or if WAGAP should be prepared to do that. And we are happy to do that if that is what the county would like to do. We do currently offer homeless services and we also do have relationships with hotels and motels within our county that we could continue to work with. Are there any?
Where are the hotels and motels at?
We are throughout the county. Um there's one in Goldendale that we work with quite a lot. We have one in Stevenson that we work with and we also have one across the river that we do occasionally work with as well if we can't find something on this side of the river.
Well, the only one in county is in Goldendale.
Do you have any other questions? How much do you currently spend per year um on the housing assistance?
That's a big chunk of our budget. I don't know the exact number off my, the top of my head, but we do have many grants to assist with housing and to assist homeless people. The most recent grant that we received was the Treasury Rental Assistance Program, which is federal funds. We received $2 million to help people to keep them in their homes so that they could not be evicted if they had lost funding or been affected by COVID.
Have you done a lot of outreach uh within Clickatot County so that the, the citizens know about this option and availability?
Yes, we have. We have people who actually go out and do outreach with homeless people. We have done several news releases to make sure that people know that this is available. That's through the newspapers, through WAGAP's website, on our Facebook page. We have flyers up. I've been on the radio. Um we have done a lot of outreach in every way that we know how to do to make sure that people know about these funds.
Okay, um I don't have any other questions. Um I got the email about the dollars. And uh I don't think, we, we haven't had a conversation about what we would expect, what we would use it for. I mean, we always exported those dollars to WAGAP, have we not? I mean, these are your dollars, but dollars for that type of a program.
Right.
So um I would expect the same thing.
Maybe we might want to put together our own. Free promo like Sam.
Commissioners, if you would like, I'll put this on as a agenda item. Uh maybe I need to wait two weeks.
I don't think you need to. It's uh not happy about it, but I think they're going along gap is my opinion, so.
May I ask Commissioner Christopher what you're not happy about?
Because I think it's more if you build it, they will come. So I think uh if I think we're going to end up with far more than we currently have and I think they're going to be lodged in an area that's already economically depressed. Um and it's not going to help the situation in the area any, so we may be on that, but that's just a personal opinion.
If I may speak to that just a little bit. These are funds that are available throughout all of Washington State and Oregon has very similar programs as well. So if you have people who are experiencing homelessness, they have options in their own county. So I do not expect, and we haven't in the past ever had an influx of homeless people because we had a shelter. And when we originally built the guided path, which is here in Benjen, that was a really big concern for a lot of people that we were going to be encouraging homeless people to come here. And that just hasn't been the case because quite honestly, the homeless people that we have in our county are from our county. They are the people who have attended our schools, who have worked in our service industries and they've fallen on hard times. So I, I do have to push back on that a little bit because we have never experienced an influx of homeless people from other areas because we had a shelter here.
Thank you.
I would, I would, if you're working on your budgeting, I would assume that these dollars would be going to you, Leslie.
Yes, I would be voting for them to go to you as well.
And I'm happy. And I'm happy to continue conversations, commissioners, if you have any concerns or any questions. Um, I'm happy to be available to speak with you and, and help answer or try to help put you at ease around this situation, just let me know.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Unfinished business, no schedule, consent agenda?
Yep, Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with all six items.
I will step down and second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the approval warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. And the payroll benefit warrants the amount of zero dollars for the date ending August second, twenty twenty-one.
I will step down to second the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Says here, road project. Payment estimate change order. Okay, I was like, I don't know, I didn't see anything in mind. Okay, uh, moving on, um, is prosecutor Canal here?
I see him.
I'm online.
All right, do you have anything for us today?
No, I don't today.
Okay. And I'm moving on to uh, flowing through this, board pending. Uh, do you have anything for the board?
Not today, sir.
Wow. All right, uh, one thing that I did want to talk about was.
Vice Chair, Casey does have something for you.
Casey's back there going, me, 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 I'm here for Lisa.
I'm just wondering if I can get verbal approval to post for the chief of operations nine-one-one coordinator with an emergency management. Because that is going to be vacant soon, and so if we could get verbal to post for that and start advertising and they are requesting to do sets one through five.
You got any problems with that?
No, I'm fine with it.
No issues here?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Hope they fight somebody.
Okay, moving on um, to um, board pending. I've got a lot of emails this week about code compliance. Um, we've had a workshop last week, we've had multiple in-person, small subcommittee workshops. And. Uh, this has been an issue for almost two years now.
Before COVID.
Well, COVID.
We haven't had anything with COVID.
Right, right.
Still a problem.
Um, and we're trying to, um, we don't have a code compliance officer currently. Um, we've come to the decision that this is a very important subject. Uh, it's a very important matter, uh, important enough that the commissioners are willing to take on the additional work and duties to manage the right person. Um, and so um, right behind you is our HR director and he is working on updating the job description of the position. Um, hopefully he will have that done in the next couple of weeks. And then we will advertise for the position and we will be bringing that position on. It was also through our discussions, we're trying to update the actual code language. Um, many of our codes haven't been updated in many, many, many years. Um, we've been attempting to do that primarily in building department for the last eight months and multiple drafts have come through and attempts to, to try to figure out how we're going to do this. Um, the prosecuting attorney's offices um, involved in helping and um, in our um, subcommittee meeting that I sit on, um, we've, you know, we've elevated this up to, we're trying to get this done very quickly. Um, and if no, what we'll do is, is we'll have draft language, um, hopefully soon. Uh, what that will look like, if it looks like we're not going to be able to have the draft language soon. Uh, and we're going to have somebody that we can hire, then what we can do is we can put a number to the old code compliance language and then we can get, start going. Um, in our ordinance, and it was an ordinance or is it a resolution? Um, for this, it was an ordinance, we stated, you know, until that ordinance runs till the end of the year or until such time as is that we can get something else in place. Um, this is for me, and that's why I joined the subcommittee, one of the highest priorities in, in the county. Uh, we have a lot of work to do, um, we hear you. And. Uh, with regards to your code compliance violation, um, you heard from Pat, there's, there's violations all throughout the county. There always has been, there always will be, um, people, you know, have a tendency here to do what they want. But we do need to deal with this situation and we are going to deal with it as quickly as we can. Um, but right now, even if I instituted everything back in the books, I don't have a code compliance officer. Um, and so until we hire the person, we don't have, you know, really any recourse. So that's where we're at right now. Yes, sir.
I would just add that it's, it's, if it isn't our number one issue, it's right there with it. Which I think is evident by what Commissioner Anderson said last week when we decided to. Instead of putting this new code compliance person under the building department director, which is where they've always been, or under HR, we're putting him under us. Because we want hands-on, I guess you would say. Um, oh, to make sure that we not only get the right person but handle the cases correctly enough and give the correct training that things are enforceable for people who aren't obeying. Um, and the fine level is correct to keep them um, from reoffending. I understand everybody wants it sooner than we can get it and that's something I'm learning in the, in, in government is things don't move as fast as I'd like them to. Um, but, but we are working on it.
Thank you, and I apologize. Government moves slowly, much coming from the private sector, government moves really slow.
Which is good in a way because then you're covering your tracks and you don't end up in court and have to throw the case out. But it's, it's.
With that being said also, um, and, and we, you know, we, we've got to make that decision and, and I, I was under the impression that we were looking to update our code, uh, make changes um, for, for. And there's two things here, there's nuisance abatement and code compliance.
Right, they're kind of wrapped in the same bubble.
They, they fall within the same bubble, but they're completely different nuisance abatement, or nuisance takes two complaints where code is just one.
Right.
Um, but it's my, my opinion that if we're going to deal with it, we should deal with the whole thing that this person's going to be dealing with and update it and, and is that the way you would, you believe that it should go as well?
I, I agree, but same deal, I don't necessarily want to bring somebody on until we have whatever we're going to have. So that when we're training them, we actually know what they're doing, uh, what passes legal muster, I guess I would say.
Well, one thing, I know I've been thinking about that as well, but for me, the thing I've been thinking about is, is that there's going to be training likely, you're not going to find somebody who's been a code compliance officer probably, I mean. So there's going to be a lot of training to be had on planning in shoreline.
Also just general knowledge.
Just learning.
But actually.
So learning that, but then also, uh, one thing, I think it would be important that we send them to is, is some side of, some sort of facilitation training or mediation training, something like that.
Hostage negotiation training.
Well.
Sorry, but yeah, okay, I'm with you.
But, yes, sir, uh, you know, once we get it ready to post, it'll take four to six weeks to advertise it, gather the rep, the applications. Commissioners.
That makes sense.
Hire than if someone deployed two weeks generally minimum before, so you're looking at six weeks plus or minus to get somebody onboard. If we did it today.
If we get an applicant.
If you get an applicant.
As long as we think we're going to be able to reach our final destination on code within two months or something. And it's not the first of the year, we have this person sitting on staff for six months. Yeah, I'm buying with it.
And the budget, budget is, they're just residing in another department. Right, we can supplemental budget them over. And yeah, I mean, if we can.
We might even have a job applicant sitting in the room.
Okay.
That's an interesting job, I don't know how many applicants we're going to get for that. It could, it could be interesting.
You said supplemental. Don't worry, the money's already there this time.
The money's already been accounted.
Okay, Q, sorry, thank you, Lee. Prosecutor Canal, you're on mic.
Thank you, uh, a few things that we, the, the status quo is not acceptable. Oh, that, you know, frankly, and I've said this before, the initial moratorium was questionable extending it. I, I, I'm just mystified as to why we've done this. So we have current codes have been large, they're not ideal, but they've largely been workable for a decade plus. We just need them enumerated so we can cite them and rely upon them and get this position filled. Then we can tinker around with, with my take up with the revisions and, and revamping. But waiting months more is to me, you know, frankly, from um, a county attorney perspective, not acceptable from a constituent purpose, not acceptable. Uh, the, the status quo needs to change immediately, gentlemen, uh, that, I don't know how the board got talked into the position that they're in now. But the idea of this continuing for two, six months, um, it's, it's causing a lot of collateral consequences that we're not contemplating at the time of the passage of the moratorium that are definitely becoming first and foremost an issue for my department, for other departments, for developers, but possible developers in, in the county. We have a system that was largely workable, it of course needs improvement and should reflect new policy preferences of a new board. But that it doesn't need, we don't, the chase of the perfect is really interfering with achieving the goal, the good right now. Uh, and I would strongly suggest the board um, move forward with filling this position, wherever it is, you can move it uh, wherever you want, um, in the end, getting this position filled, getting this code enumerated and, and effective again, and then we can go from there. But if we're, you know, the, want to spend months in committees hashing out the ideal, especially when they're frankly, there's the non-reconcilable goals are trying to be achieved with these revisions. Uh, it is, it is becoming increasingly an issue. Uh, we need to get something in place and we can make improvements, but the continuation of no code compliance officer with this moratorium is not acceptable, uh, from my perspective anyways, thank you.
Thank you, so no matter what, we're, we still got to hire the person, so we're six weeks out. Do you see of any way that we can do something before that?
To actually be in effect by then? No, I, I, no, no, I don't.
I mean. Yeah, so, so we can't just upgrade somebody to code compliance or add to their docket. That you can think of, right? I mean, it doesn't fit inside anybody's job descriptions or duties.
Well, again, we have a code that for some reason ended up in a X number, which is again mystifying. That was just supposed to be a placeholder while it was transitioned to a different code and now we have the standalone code. Um, it, 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 it just, it's nonsensical at this point. We just need to get that enumerated, consult with the clerk of the board and the auditor to get that enumerated and load it up the meaning code, um, and get that, and get someone doing something here.
Right, but who's going to do the job until we get somebody hired?
Well, again, it's up to you, you have, uh, you have a current job description and, and employee that's responsible for supervising and training this. They've apparently either refused or abandoned that role, so it's, it's up to you guys that the personal issues are for you guys to figure out. Uh, but it, but you know, waiting months is, is not okay.
Okay. Well, we are doing our best and our due diligence as well as we can. And um, I don't want to hire someone until we have that new job description that HR is working on because it's a lot easier. And but I'm getting a nod from him that he's, it's very high on his priority list to get this done. And so we can get.